I got it, by the way, I want you to have your baby. Kelsey's gonna have another baby. I'm excited.
I'll put it in there.
No, no, my fault. I just thought I'd make that announcement. Can I take my jacket off? Thank you, Martin.
You take your jacket off and then you sit on the desk?
I don't know why. Because I can't, I'm gonna leave it on now. Okay, secret is making comments.
Let's go, man.
You're gonna show off your time.
It's this short.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'd like to call the Northampton County Council meeting of June 1st, 2017 to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Ms. Zembo, can we call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Cusick?
Present.
Mr. Deed?
Here.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Geisinger?
Present.
Mr. Pratt?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
All are present except Mr. Pratt.
We have one absence this evening. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 18th, 2017 meeting, moved by Mr. Deed, to approve by acclamation, seconded by Mr. Geisinger. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. Next is courtesy of the floor. We didn't have anyone on the sign-in sheet. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council this evening? Okay, there being none, we will move into the county comptroller's report. Mr. Barron, is he, he is not present this evening. Next is the county executive's report. Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown has no report. Next is old business. We have no old business listed on the agenda. Is there any old business that anyone would like to raise at this time? There being none. We will move then into new business. First item is the introduction of the 2017 budget amendment ordinance. We do these periodically throughout the year, and at this time, I would ask for two cosponsors for the introduction of the budget amendment. Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Bennell will cosponsor. This will be discussed at the finance committee meeting in two weeks, and then the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held on June 15th, 2017. Next item under new business is an introduction of the ordinance titled "An Ordinance Providing for the Conveyance of Permanent and Temporary Easements Owned by Northampton County Located in Lower Nazareth Township to the Eastern Suburban Water Authority to Enable Them to Provide Public Water Through Its Public Water System." And we would need two cosponsors to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Werner and Mr. Bennell will be cosponsoring the ordinance. I believe this, too, will be discussed at the finance committee, and then the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the June 15th, 2017 meeting. Next, under new business, is the consideration of the resolution approving the service agreement between Timekeeping Systems, Inc., Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool, P Corp., and Northampton County. And this was discussed previously at a finance committee meeting, so I'll ask Mr. Geisinger to introduce that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I look for the cover sheet with the actual resolution information on it. There it is. All right, thank you. I'm trying to figure out which, how much of this I need to read.
We have plenty of time.
I know, but we were on record. We're on a record pacer. All right. Now therefore be resolved by the county council as follows. All clauses incorporated in or set fully at length. County council has found that the professional services agreement is an intergovernmental agreement for the purposes of Article 13, adopted by Northampton County Council on July 28, 1978, and as amended accordingly. And in the event, the provisions of this resolution shall be several if any provision thereof shall be declared unconstitutional, legal, or valid. Such decision shall not have the validity of the remaining provision of the resolution. hereby declare it as the intent of county council that this resolution would be amended as if such unconstitutional, legal, or valid provision shall have not been included therein, and all other county resolutions part thereof relating to the service agreement that were adopted prior to this resolution are in conflict are hereby repealed. So, the, whereas on November 21st, 2016, the Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool entered into a security services agreement with Timekeeping Systems wherein P Corp. agrees to purchase the electronic guard tour system for Timekeeping Systems, Inc., and make the electronic guard tour system available to member counties of P Corp. who determine that they want the electronic tour system installed in their prisons, and Northampton County has determined they want the electronic guard tour system installed in their prison. And whereas on May 17th, 2017, county council received a request to approve a professional service agreement between Timekeeping Systems, P Corp., and Northampton County as participating is set forth therein, and we so move, Mr. President.
And this was discussed previously at the finance committee last month, in some depth by Mr. Keen. Any comments or questions?
No, I think the only comment was that, you know, Mr. Keen proved to the finance committee, and it was moved forward unanimously, that the system would greatly enhance his ability to, to be more efficient in the prison, and I, I think he made a great case for it.
I would agree. Anything further? No. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Deed?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero with one absentee. Okay, and we need a couple of signatures. That's fine, yours is there, and Mr. Brown's will go there. Okay, so that was all we had under new business. Is there any other new business to come before council this evening? Okay, there being none. Next is council committee reports. Do we have any, Mrs. Ferrara and then Mr. Phillips?
The Economic Development Committee met earlier this evening. In fact, we had a rather lengthy meeting, but very informative meeting. We reported on all of the, oh, hotel tax, gaming authority, the CDBG. Good news from, for the Green Knight Industrial Park, a 3.9 million. But the majority of the meeting was the Da Vinci Science Center update with especially good presentation by the former mayor of Chattanooga, talking about his waterfront and how it was a wasteland. It was just, actually, a very, it wasn't even a safe place to be. And it has gone from that to being a magnet for industry and for economic development. So, huge, great project, and very, very similar to what they wish to do for Da Vinci. So, this booklet is available. There's one of these for each of you, so check out your latest update on Da Vinci.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Sure. I had an opportunity, I went over to the farmhouse at Louise Moore Park to look at the stairwell and some other, you know, issues there, and I had asked that we untable the items regarding the farmhouse and the work to be done over there, and that, they have been withdrawn. I don't understand why, but I was thinking maybe, Stan, could you come up and, and tell everybody, or you're gonna do that, Kathy?
When it was tabled, we had a certain amount of time to award the bids. Procurement had contacted the three contractors on there. The UGC did not extend the 30-day extension for us to wait for it to be untabled, so we have to start the process all over again.
Okay.
And that being said, when we come back in 90 days and it costs a lot more money, you're gonna understand why, because of the economic times have changed. The contractor gave us, the reason is that he already has work set up. This was in the timeline to start now. It's not gonna be able to start, so the times has changed, and the materials are gonna cost us more money, too, so.
Well, you're making that assumption.
You're making it, yeah. You're saying that.
You don't know that.
I would have to say you are going to.
I'm saying to you, fact, you don't know that.
That's fine.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Have you solved the riddle of the, of the grandfathering in of the ADA requirements?
Mr. Lauer was going to give some kind of a, um, opinion.
What I was asked to do was to take a look at the potential for liability, but I mean, that's something that...
I'm sorry. That's something that the county solicitor would have to speak to. I was asked to take a look at whether or not, if someone couldn't get to the second floor because it was not ADA compliant, however it was grandfathered, whether or not there's any liability for that. I, I indicated in an earlier email that I thought that was something that the county should address. However, I did do some research on it, and I'll be happy to do, get a report out to everybody on that myself.
I would appreciate that, absolutely.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I didn't mean to be flip about it, but it just seemed to be a puzzlement.
It's not a puzzlement. Like I said, it truly is grandfathered. That is a fact, absolutely. But in my experience, and I'm sure in a lot of other people's experience, Mr. Warner, we went through last year with Louise Moore Park, the trails not being ADA accessible. Now, they should be grandfathered also, and I believe they are. We had to make sure they were. You're the nice man who...
We had a, we actually had an incident where Stan took care of the ADA compliance on the park itself, where we had a trailway where a handicapped person couldn't visit. But that was remedied rather easily, at least I think it was. Ray, Stan?
As was the voting request that we had remedied very easily also. This one is not such an easy thing to remedy, because we're talking about a second-floor entry. So, it is grandfathered.
She didn't ask you about the silo yet.
I sent pictures. I did send pictures to everyone. Well, I sent them to Linda to send to forward. I don't know if everybody got them.
Yeah, we got them.
Yeah, we saw the silo.
Silo still up.
Lots of silos around, yes.
My opinion.
Well, my question, excuse me, my question is, if we're going out to bid all over again, are these ADA and the second floor gonna be part of the original bid now, rather than an after bid or another bid?
Yes, they will be part of the original bids.
They'll be part of the original bid, so obviously, it'll probably come in higher than it did originally. So, you could take the original bid plus 28, and maybe that's about where to bid.
The silo was in the original bids. This piece that you were voting on was for the engineer and architect, for the work they did to create this ADA and second egress access.
To create the silo.
Correct. It was put in the bids for the, the work to be done.
Yeah. And Kathy, our, what we were asked to approve was the, the design work for that, not, not the build, the design.
The design.
There is no silo yet.
Can I just say something? Because I, I was there, I think there's, there's one issue about that, you know, ADA compliant, and there's another issue that I, I'm concerned about. You say you ask about, you know, you said, I don't think I saw that either, Phil, but for the solicitor to comment on is the, the stairwell there, is the spiral stairwell, it's pretty precarious. A handicapped person wouldn't ever be able to make it. Somebody in, in, in good shape, you know, would be okay, but it's, it's, if there's a fire or something, I'll be honest with you, it's, it seems like it would be a problem getting out of, getting down there perhaps. So, I, I would love to see, you know, I don't know if that's something that we could do, is to get a, a reading from liability perspective, because that's what I'm sort of hinging on now, even more so than the, in the ADA. Is that, is that a problem? Because stairwell is not, the stairwell is a 19th century stairwell.
Right. Just to clarify, I, I did not notify the county solicitor that it was his issue. When I was asked about it, and unfortunately, I didn't bring that part of my file with me, but whenever it came in, I mean, I sent a brief email back to someone saying, I think it was an issue that should be addressed by the administration and not by council, because they're the ones who would have to litigate if there was any. But I will be happy to take a look at it, and I'll have it for you as quickly as I can.
If you sent it to me, I'm sorry, I, I...
No, I don't think I sent it to you. I, I don't remember where I sent it. I'm not sure.
Because that, that's the other thing, is I'm, I'm like, okay, if we're grandfathered from an ADA perspective, and if I didn't have any problem with that stairwell for, then I, then it'd be clear for me on what I wanted to do.
Okay.
But I'm, I just feel like there might be a problem there.
Well, to, to short circuit any further things, how about if Ryan and I get together over the next, sometime early next week and try to get you an answer right away?
Yeah, that'd be nice. You know, before they, you know, to answer, you know, Ms. Ferrara's idea regards to, this is an open issue, and we should give guidance before we go through a whole new process.
I agree. That would be good.
My, my mind is almost made up, but not quite there.
Any other things for committee reports?
We're shadowing.
Counsel liaison reports. Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, I had the opportunity to go to the recent LVEDC committee meeting, and actually, some pretty good news. Mr. Brown was there. I'll be asking him to share some of his thoughts on one of the things that they proposed, but actually, Lehigh Valley was chosen by American Airlines in their in-flight magazine for their July issue featured communities. So, the exposure's gonna be, I think the email said 5.4 million readers are gonna be exposed to our community. And it's pretty good. I mean, that, they only pick eight a year, so we're one of them. And also, they're gonna have a, a cover unveiling at the LV, well, the International Airport on the 28th from 6:00 to 7:30, if anybody's interested. So, the other thing that they talked about, Don had ordered a, a reevaluation of the scope and the purpose of the LVEDC and how they've been functioning. I think they, they did a study a couple of years, and they pretty much came up with some of the same conclusions, but one of the things that sparked a lot of interest during the group discussion was the redundancy of, of so many different processes in county or in local governments. And, you know, that, to a potential business coming in, that's a little bit cumbersome to have to navigate all of our little boroughs and councils and committees, and Mr. Brown made a pretty good point about how he thinks maybe some, a little bit of foresight, and maybe we could try to, try to maybe make it a little bit more manageable for these new businesses that come in and try to figure out what we can do to maybe regionalize some of those processes. So, I don't know if you want to say anything about it, or... No? Okay. You made a good point at the meeting, so, but something to think about. I think the LVEDC might come in and talk about that in the future, so.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I went to Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, and I also formally joined the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, their transportation study, they have a transportation subcommittee, and I, I joined that. And we had a, you know, a very interesting meeting, and it's all, and I also am on the freight advisory committee, so it's, I mean, the freight and the traffic is, like, everybody's, you know, studying it, it's, a lot of people are on it. No easy answers, but I think that some of the things, like the idea of having, you know, queuing, onsite queuing for the warehouses and things like that, now, for warehouses, where they used to queue on the side of the road, now they're getting, putting in the ordinances that they queue, you know, inside the, the property and things of that nature. So, what, what, you know, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission does in this transportation committee is they, you know, influence, they review all the plans. They influence the, the plans in regards to their advice for these new, you know, when a township or a borough has a new facility, they give them a, you know, a, a review of what it looks like and, and how they would handle it. So, it's, it's interesting.
Yeah, I would agree. We have a lot of places in this county that are struggling with the warehouse type of development, that really don't have an answer for it in their zoning or weren't prepared. So, yeah, what, what she does there is critical.
You know, Becky was here, and she went from the west side of the Lehigh Valley, you know, over to Route 33, and, man, talking about the development, I, I think she said it, or I've heard it somewhere else, pretty much all development on land, land that can be developed, has got people, you know, bidding on it already.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Counsel clerk report? Nothing this evening. Counsel solicitors report?
I just would, I have really two things to report on. First of all, Mr. Cusick asked me to take a look at the procedure by which DLR Group was selected by the executive to, to perform a, an evaluation of a master plan and some programming for a new Northampton County Detention Center. There was an executive order that the county council received, by the terms of which it was directed that a contract be prepared by the procurement division and awarded to DLR Group for that service. And essentially, that was accomplished in that fashion because the executive concluded pursuant to the administrative code that this was, I believe the conclusion reached was that this was the only provider that would be appropriate for this work. And at Mr. Cusick's request, I, I reviewed that and looked pretty carefully at the administrative code, and for reasons that I've outlined in a memorandum that I circulated today, I, it's, it's my opinion that the procedure employed does not comply with the administrative code. Specifically, there are basically, these are the basic reasons. First of all, in order to use non-competitive negotiation, which is the method that was actually employed in this case, Section 13.10 of the administrative code provides essentially for when that's, when that's appropriate, and specifically, it's when the county executive determines that it is not practical or prudent to use other than the required or designated supply, service, or item. So, that has to, that, there has to be a showing that it would not be practical or prudent to use any other supplier. And further, in Section 13.02, non-competitive negotiation is specifically defined as a method of contract selection that can be used to purchase a product or a service that can be obtained only from one source. And in reviewing the executive order, neither of those appears there. No determination that it's not practical or prudent to use anyone else, and no determination that this is the only source from which it can be obtained. That's the first issue I would have with the executive order. But more importantly, the administrative code also specifically says in describing competitive negotiation, the following. All professional services shall be selected using this method. Now, it's difficult to determine in just looking at the executive order what those services would be, and therefore, whether they are professional services. However, in looking, first of all, at the executive order, and then I, if you will, stepped outside of it a little bit and looked at the website for DLR Group in Washington, I mean, they do architectural and engineering services. They would clearly qualify, in my view, as professional services, and therefore, the only method of selection that's permitted under the administrative code is competitive negotiation. And just to give you a short version of that, what that requires is essentially that it be put out there for people to submit bids or proposals, and then the executive decides which bid or proposal is appropriate, taking into consideration whatever factors he chooses to consider. It's not just price determined, so, however, that's the only method of selection that's permitted under the administrative code. And then, just to kind of take it one step further, Section 13.07 provides that procurement of county property, quote unquote, that's, that's the word the administrative code uses, over $25,000 shall be by competitive sealed bid, competitive negotiation, or cooperative purchasing, but none of those permit non-competitive selection. So, for those reasons, I, I don't believe that the executive order used the correct source selection method, and that's my opinion. Now, what council would choose to do with that, I don't know. I will tell you that, given the timing of the source and the fact that I was in another county for the last two days, this didn't actually come out of my office until sometime around 2:00 today. I came down to the solicitor's office to deliver a copy. Ryan wasn't there, and his secretary gave me his email address, and I either wrote it down wrong or whatever, but when I attempted to send it, I got this long thing at the end telling me that they couldn't be delivered. Ryan has only learned of it earlier tonight, because I gave him a copy. But that is my opinion. I don't believe the correct source selection method was used.
Mr. Warner?
I, I just want some points of clarification on this. I agree with everything that Mr. Lauer said under Section 1310 and Section 137. I want some clarity on this, because I'm a little confused, okay? The master plan considers, it says considering existing space and possible reuse of the existing facility. Is that correct?
Good evening, counsel, and, Ms. Warner. I'll provide, I'll try to fill in the blanks, if, if I may, and maybe I'll provide the clarity. With respect to the procedure that was used, as we typically do, we did vet this through procurement and so on and so forth, as to the selection process. DLR, the uniqueness of them and where the, why they were selected for this. Over the past year or so, we've had Dan Keen and his team have visited half a dozen more different potential jail sites that have been built over the last 10 years, really begin the process of looking at what, what would be appropriate for Northampton County. We've met with dozens of potential architects, engineering firms, conglomerates, so on and so forth. In looking at what would be appropriate for Northampton County, there was a visit that was done to Lexington, Kentucky. It was built, Dan and his team went to visit it, compared that to everything else, and I said, Dan, all right, so if we had to choose one right now, which would be the design that you would prefer to go with? And that Lexington, Kentucky is the one that he selected. That in and of itself, you know, there are a number of reasons why that design was preferred. But before we can really move forward and to really evaluate, is this the appropriate design, we have to take a look at how that would fit with the Northampton County's jail operations, and really, the word programming is what comes up. And by programming, what we're referring to is all of the activities that would take place inside those walls, if you would. So, everything from mental health treatment, to drug treatment, to reentry work, to career training, all of those types of activities that would take place, as well as how we would sort through the various populations, male, female, pregnant female, preoccupations, those types of things. So, what, because DLR... So, what, because DLR has overseen the construction programming and worked with Lexington, Kentucky, and developing their site, uh, we selected them because they have the expertise on that particular design and site. We've asked them to come in and go, okay, come in, uh, take a look at what we're currently doing, work with the DOC, overlay what we anticipate doing on this design plan, give us a relative cost of what that would do to the operation. Will we have to expand our workforce? Would we change our workforce? Would we shift the workforce in some way? Uh, so give us all that kind of analysis, uh, based on the input from the director of corrections and his team. Would we have to modify the design in any way based on our population? For example, for the areas of the jail that would house, uh, inmates that had mental health issues, they, it would be designed slightly differently. If we have hardcore, if we have, um, those that are under, uh, observation for drug treatment, those types of things. And the flexibility of that space is what we're, we're looking to assess. None of that can be determined just because we went to visit the Lexington, Kentucky site, because they have their unique way of operating. So, before we would go much further in evaluating whether or not we should put this out for an RFP, for an actual architect and engineering firm to actually come in and actually do the design work, which is probably about a five to eight million dollar undertaking in and of itself, uh, I asked, I told the team that we need to verify upfront, will the design work for what we intend to operate the, the jail under? What are the impacts of that, and how will it affect our operating cost? For example, you know, we could easily go, our current, uh, current jail operates at about, uh, at the end of 2016, it's about a hundred and fifteen dollars per day per bid. And if you use seven hundred as a, kind of just a benchmark number of inmates that we house, the Kentucky design is operating at sixty-six dollars per day, uh, in their operation. And if you do the math, we're, we're talking about six to twelve million dollar swing in operating cost. With that number, if you throw it out as I just did, seems compelling, but until we overlay our programming into that design and understand how it would affect what we do, that number is just a anathetical number, uh, that we can say, hey, let's go ahead and do this design because it looks like it'll work, um, going forward. So, uh, with that, that's the deal. Go ahead.
Uh, I just am curious, how can you do a design if you don't have the land or have a site selection?
The, uh, the, the site selection is an independent process that we have to go through. And working with the team, we're looking at it, recognizing that while we haven't selected the site, that the, that the design, uh, that we're going through, just the, just to give you an idea, uh, if we were to, if we were to RFP and select an engine, uh, so that's a six, uh, ninety, a hundred and twenty day, just to select the right, um, architect and engineering firm, it's a nine to twelve month cycle before they actually produce a final document. So, these are very long lead time, uh, type of things that we're trying to undertake. So, we're working on, uh, we're working in parallel on a number of, of issues as we try to, uh, resolve and start, uh, moving this, uh, this project, um, forward.
Uh, Mr. Warner?
Okay, I just, I need to clarify. I believe there's a misperception here that's going on, okay? First of all, um, are you talking about building a new jail on land somewhere?
Uh, we're talking about a combination of a greenfield site, yes, um, and, um, repurposing a portion of the new old jail here, uh, for providing the support, um, to, uh, to the courts.
Okay, because the, there is, there is a, there are things going on outside of our discussions here. There, people are already talking about where the new jail is going to be that you're, that the, but here's the, here's my problem. Um, first of all, I, I looked at the Lexington, Kentucky. It's twelve hundred beds, it's a stone horse barn, it's on seventy-one acres, it's four hundred and thirty thousand square feet, and it was under budget at sixty-two point two million dollars, but it was a repurposed building. That's what they did. They took a historic building and they redid it, uh, behind a, behind a, uh, thirty thousand square foot structure. My take on what was presented, and I, and I, and I was, I was a little, I, I was a little befuddled by it because what, the way I read it was that you're trying to repurpose our jail, you're having these people come in and say, we will use the existing area, and you're, and in the, in the, in this, this is kind of a diluted.
So, when, let me clarify that point. When we, we talk about programming, programming also includes, uh, work release, uh, central booking, intake, release, uh, visitation, those types of things. So, as we're looking at doing, um, a new facility, which I believe, um, will, will prove that should be done, because you, I don't believe, at least no one's been able to come back and tell me there's a cost-effective way of reconstructing the old prison, on the old prison site, without exorbitantly driving costs through the roof.
Not, not, not questioning that part of it, yeah.
But in, in recognizing, um, such as intake, seventy-two hour hold, uh, the court, uh, court calendar, uh, inmates that would be going to court, all those things need to be accommodated for. And that would be where the, uh, the new old section, uh, would be potentially repurposed for those types of, uh, needs.
Okay, so you're talking about repurposing some of the jail, and then it said here in the, this is, this is not clear. It says reuse of existing facility and existing space, and, and it talked about a detention center, okay? Talked, made a mention of it. What is the compelling, what, what's the compelling reason to rush this? There's a, a proceed until justification of service. I don't.
To, to do what, I'm sorry?
To, what, what's the compelling reason to push this forward when really there's, I mean, we're talking seventy-two thousand dollars, and we really haven't determined what we're going to do. We really haven't determined if we're going to take the old buildings and repurpose them, or if we're truly going to go out and, and put a new building up. We don't know, we're talking about the, the parallel that you're talking about with Lexington was twelve hundred beds. We may not need, we don't have twelve hundred bed necessarily.
No.
And it's a four hundred and thirty thousand square foot, uh, program on seventy-one acres at sixty-two million. I don't think we said sixty, and that's in Kentucky, and I can't tell you what their costs are for land in Kentucky, but, uh, I can tell you that it has numerous mechanical contractors, Amtech, Alex, they're all local construction and engineering firms, and they were under budget on their program. But they use the existing facilities.
The, you, from what you, and I hadn't read that.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand, it's.
Thirty thousand out of a four hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility.
Thirty thousand square foot behind their building, yes.
Facility. Um, we, we don't need, uh, and actually I think the number they're allocated for is more like four hundred and fifty, um, some odd beds, uh, I believe.
Well, it's, yeah, their beds, their beds were twelve hundred beds at Lexington, at the DLR, and DLR owns it.
But this, this is part of the determination we're going to, obviously, no, we're not looking at doing a, a, we'll call it a fourteen hundred bed facility, that we're not looking at that. Uh, but this is the decision-making process preliminarily that we need to move through to make these determinations, what we can use and not use. If we're going to go greenfield, what would we, that look like? If we're going to repurpose some of the old facility here, what would we do with that? How would that look? What kind of programming would go, uh, here? It's not an independent process, and all of this is really just, uh, quite honestly, background work, so that we then, if and when we do are prepared to go and execute an actual engineering and design architect, uh, this would actually be all part, uh, feed into the RFP itself. So, we knew, so we know what we're asking for, uh, upfront, and the, and guide the architect and the engineers, uh, in the RFP process. Uh, we're just, we just don't have enough information yet, uh, and for me, uh, part of this is be able to execute the, um, uh, some financial projections.
Okay.
What is the potential building cost, uh, of doing this, of retrofitting the old? What will be the operational impact? We're, we're currently at about a thirty million dollar budget for our current, uh, jail here. Is that going to expand or contract? If you look at the daily projections, uh, and say, okay, if, if we come in close to that, you know, we could potentially pull millions of dollars out of the current operation and allocate that in, and towards the building process potentially. But I'm not prepared to come to council and go, hey, let's execute this and start spending, uh, millions of dollars until I have more information. DLR was selected because I do think they are uniquely qualified, uh, having done this exercise, having gone through the building process, um, to be able to best give us that, um, overlay and, and evaluation. And the, well, it's seventy-two thousand dollars, it, it seems like a lot of money, uh, but, uh, you know, rough estimate, we're looking at, uh, you know, potentially a hundred million dollar plus or minus, um, facility by the time we're done. Uh, and I want to make sure that we have all the relative information the best we can before we actually, uh, even propose moving forward, um, and actually undertake a, something like this.
If I could just comment, um, I completely agree that this is something that, that we need to do as part of this process. Eighteen seventy-one is a long time ago, and that's when the main portion of our prison was built. I applaud the, the visits that, uh, Mr. Keen did. I think that that's terrific, but I can't help wondering if a step was skipped in the process.
Such as what?
And that, that step would have been to, to put out an RFP right at the beginning and then do the visits and, you know, follow up that way, and then.
What would you, what would you have, uh, just said, I, I'm trying to follow your, your logic, uh, Mr. Cusick. What would you have RFP'd for?
Exactly what is mentioned in the executive order. The, the programming, uh, piece to, uh, or the precursor to any programming and construction.
But the, the, the challenge, the challenge is simply this, okay? The design and the programming are interlinked. You can't do one without the other. Uh, and we could, we could take the, uh, a more conservative approach, issue an RFP as you're requesting, find an architect and engineering firm, and they'll charge us a few hundred thousand dollars to begin with, to start to sit with the DOC, the Dan Keen, and go, so what would you like to do in your prison? And literally start with the programming and start laying in brick by brick, based on the programming, and eventually building out, that's probably a six-month, nine-month process, I think six-month process alone, just to begin to walk down that, that point. Because of the work that, um, the DOC has done, and we have a relative idea of the design that would work, there's other reasons for that, for that design, we've seen, that's a semi, kind of a horseshoe-shaped design, there is a, a kind of a butterfly design, so on and so forth. There, there are things in that design, it's compact, it has a smaller footprint relative to some of the other things, uh, Dan has seen. Uh, the exterior of the building, uh, you don't have the, uh, traditional barbed wire fencing, those kind of thing, everything is self-contained in the building, uh, and aesthetically, it looks like an office building. You don't see any inmates, uh, you don't see any orange jumpsuits in the yard, they get their open outdoor space, uh, and it's never seen from the outside. Uh, the maintenance conduits are all built into the building itself so that, uh, maintenance people don't actually have to enter the jail itself, they actually get to do the work without ever encountering the space. There's a whole list of reasons why, uh, Dan felt that this was an appropriate design. Uh, but now, since we found a design, we, we're looking to, uh, just see if the programming works with it. We do believe it will, with some minor changes, and then at that point, we would step back and go, okay, now, we were prepared to go ahead and, and issue an RFP seeking, you know, the traditional, um, uh, overall, but at that point, we're committing, you know, if not hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in, in that process. And that's why it may seem a little, you know, which came first, the programming or the design, uh, both are, both are equally important, and you can't have one without the other, but the, in, in working with the consultants that we've met with just randomly, they would say, okay, we'll, we'll walk through the programming with the DOC and we'll build it as we go along. Okay, and, and I'm actually expecting that we might be able to avoid costs longer term.
Uh, Mr. Dietz and then Mrs. Ferraro.
Well, I, I guess, I, I agree that, you know, obviously need to study for it. Uh, I, I do think it, it should want to, to bid, you know, and then whether or not, um, you know, DLR came in, you know, at seventy-two, and, and maybe someone else off the street that didn't have the background came in at sixty, I could see the justification to, to say, to use them. But maybe another, uh, developer or, or programmer could come up with a, a plan that's in the ballpark or, or less, or, or even causing DLR to be sharper with it, you know, their pencil on, on the bid for it.
The, the number, the seventy-two thousand is, is a, believe me, we, you know, we beat up on them over the cost, okay? We're, it's not, it's not that, Mr. Dietz, and I, I respect council's position that they should have gone out for an RFP, selected three, come back, and I respect that, and I can understand council's concern for not having followed that. But the uniqueness of what we're trying to extract from this particular exercise, I think would have, would preclude, first of all, you, you probably wouldn't get someone coming in, uh, uh, without then having to go through the whole education process with them for saying, well, do you know this design? Have you worked with it? Go visit Lexington, come back, tell us. There's a whole expertise that DLR, DLR, I believe, has as a result of having gone through this particular design. Now, there is a risk, we, we are running a risk.
Well, and again, that's, that's what I say, so if DLR came back and, and other ones didn't come back with the, the same background or, or same ability, I, I wouldn't really have a problem saying this is why we picked DLR out of the open bid process, is because of their uniqueness to this.
Okay, so I mean, I, look, uh, okay, look, I can understand putting out a, a bid just for the exercise, knowing that DLR is the only one that's going to have really the background on.
But I don't think it's just an exercise, I mean, I, I think it's how we're supposed to run things.
Oh, well, I, I respectfully disagree.
Mrs. Ferraro, then Mr. Benel, then Mr. Phillips.
I, I just fail to realize, or how, I fail to understand how you can have a design without having a site selected, that the site, the design is not appropriate or is appropriate for a particular site. To me, it sounds like you have already decided that you're going to have on green space, probably out at Gracemont, and, um, instead of a high building like, uh, over Lehigh County.
Those, those basic, that basic decision in, in working with, uh, the, uh, Dan Keen and the director, and looking at various models is, no, we were not looking at going up and doing a five-story, uh, or.
Lehigh County.
Seven-story, um, type of operation. There are inefficiencies in that particular design. And again, the design, um, in the programming that we, we believe, or that is, is moving through the justice system, uh, I think collectively, we've had conversations in this room where the number of mental health-challenged inmates that are coming into the system, we have to, if we're going to build a, a facility, we have to be able to accommodate that, um, whether we have disability inmates that come in. Uh, there are a number of challenges that we have that, at least collectively, going up, uh, into a multi-story facility would not be a design that we would, uh, we would opt to procure at this moment.
But that's the site that you have, you do what you have to do with the property or the land that you have.
But to do that, uh, Ms. Ferraro, if you're referring to being able to do it here.
Right.
Um, the, we've had, I, we've had conversations with multiple, uh, contractors, and the cost is exorbitant. Uh, the logistics, you, you'd be building in a third, a third, a third over a five-to-eight year period, and having to relocate at least fifty percent of the inmate population out of the county for that window of time in order to stage that, let alone the impact we, you know, on parking and, and everything else you would, it's not something, I, I believe that would be a, a method of last resort. Um, and we're trying to do it in, in such a way that is not going to, um, uh, break the taxpayer's pocket. You know, this is a huge undertaking. I do, I do believe we can get it done. I think there are efficiencies that would be gained, I think we could get it done reasonably. Um, but as far as the administration goes, we need more information before I even entertain these broader conversations about where we do it, um, so on and so forth, how do we, how we'll pay for it, uh, those are all considerations.
Yeah, and I'll just verify that, uh, the previous study done by Highland Associates ten years ago did indicate that the cost to, to do significant changes here are exorbitant because of the space limitations.
I, I guess, and, and thanks for coming up, Mr. Brown. I, I think, you know, my only concern was what made this unique, because when I go into the administrative code, I read it, and, you know, if they're providing a service that is unique, then that takes care of the, the non-competitive, um, contract. And, you know, Mr. Keen had come before council and did give the layout of what he, you know, what type of prison he was looking for, um, and to respectfully disagree with Ms. Ferraro, I think basically all we need is, is, it's the land that you're going to need. And as long as, if there's a hilly land that can be leveled, we've all seen enough construction projects that, you know, we can make the land fit the need of, of the prison, you just need the acreage. Um, so I, I don't want to get any into hearsay where the prison could go, um, or should go, but I know Mr. Keen did say, you know, basically, you know, I agree with Mr. Cusick's at eighteen seventy-one, and given the space limitations that we have here to rehab the current prison just isn't an option. So, I think this is just. So, I think this is just, I agree with the executive. I think this is a specialty that this company comes in with. I think we have to trust the expertise of Mr. Keen. That's why we all agreed to him being our corrections, Department of Corrections head. And, you know, this is something that he's, he's worked on. He's told everybody that, you know, the prison is something that he wants to see built, and I trust his judgment. So, as long as I know why this, this company was chosen as their expertise and their uniqueness, I'm okay.
Mr. Phillips?
So, Mr. Brown, this group has a prison aid designed in Kentucky. Is that, who owns that prison in Kentucky? Is that owned by the municipality?
It's owned by the city of Lexington.
Okay. So, if this works out right...
ELR. The prison itself?
Yes. Okay.
I don't believe it's, you could be right.
Yeah, see, so if this, if this works out right, we like the prison in Kentucky to lay out. We want, we're doing this study to make sure that our programming matches that, right? And at the same time, we're trying to get the most ideal location. And we'll, you know, if this works out, we'll get that location and we'll get this, this analysis of our programming to that design in Kentucky. Then we'll have enough information to create a, an RFP for competitive bid for a design firm for the, for the prison? Or is it just by de facto? Because it seems like we're so married to DLR at this point, we've already decided that DLR will be, will be the design firm to do that.
No, I'm not, I'm not wed to anybody at this point. It just happens to be, that's the, if it was, you know, Mr. Cusick, Inc. had designed what we're looking at, then we'd be going with Mr. Cusick, Inc. I'm not wed to DLR. There are a number of groups out there that are all professionals in the, in the prison, jail, construction industry, and we've met with most of them. And most of them are conglomerates of some kind. They'll select an architect, they'll select a contractor, they'll select, you know, oversight groups, so on and so forth. But before we go down that process, because once we let that RFP, they're going to bid based on the RFP we let. Now, you're encumbering hundreds, if not millions of dollars of costs involved in that process. So, we're just looking to make sure that when we put the RFP together, that we've done enough homework on the expectation of design, that we're going to be pretty close. Because we can't let it get halfway through the design process with an engineering and architecture firm and then go, "Well, we don't like it. It's not quite working. Can you change it?" And it just, and there have been disasters like that going forward. So, the, the idea that this is a way to back into DLR, they're going to have to come back and bid on whatever the RFP is along with anyone else. I mean, it has to be an open, public bid as we move forward for that. But at that point, we're committing to a particular direction and path, and I don't think we have enough, quite enough information. I think we're moving in that, in that direction, but I can't stand before you and go, "Absolutely, this is a hundred percent guaranteed where we're going to turn out." But I need more information so that at least A, I can get the DOC to sign off, going, "Yeah, my programming will work. I can look some basic, in-the-box calculations and present it to council. It's going to be eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, whatever the number might be. Here's likely where we're going to go. Here's the timeframe. Here's how we could pay for it." You know, and then, and then be able to get, to get the okay to move forward with that. So, this is all background and preliminary decision-making that we're moving through. But I, we got to a point where until we start taking on at least some direction in calculation like this, we can continue to look at designs, or we can continue to do it, but the process won't, won't be able to move forward coherently, I think.
Just another round. Yeah, I understand what you're doing, and I think there's a lot of thought into that. You know, my problem is, you know, I have a problem with this not being a competitive, that this, I feel this should be competitive. I think that there's people out there that could reply, and if they don't reply, then we, then it's simple. That's, that's my issue here, is that I think we should have followed the administrative code. I've not gotten enough justification in my head why we didn't.
Well, and I respect your opinion, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Lauer's opinion on, on what he provided. But that's, I believe there is that flexibility in the administrative code for that reason, because not everything, you know, we could go through the bureaucratic process, and that's how I saw it. Fine, we'll let the bid, let the RFP. All right, everybody, I wasted time looking at three bids, and then we select DLR and we move forward. But that's, you know, that's again, just a waste of time and energy. And we did concur, we get concurrence from procurement that, yeah, this makes sense. This is an appropriate way to move forward.
Mr. Warner?
I'm not in disagreement about the jail. I think we need a new one, no problem. I've always been on the same page with that. The funding for this program is going to be from the general fund or outside the general fund?
We budgeted for this.
It's budgeted for it?
Yeah, we budgeted.
We put money aside that would be very appropriate for this.
For this, okay?
Correct.
Especially because of that, I think I would follow the same thoughts as Mr. Phillips, that it should be competitive. We should look into some local people that can build and take some labor from this area if it's possible.
Just, just for the record, there's no building going on in this.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm saying those people that are involved in, in doing this right now, those people that are, there are no less than twelve people on this list, detention contractors. I never even heard of a detention firm, mechanical contractors, builders, design builders, consulting firms. I want to know the people that are going to be involved initially, who are going to be, who are going to be setting up dollars and cents that come out of that fund. And I think that is appropriate to ask that with, with those kind of dollars.
And, Ms. Warner, I don't disagree. We've been around, we've talked to a number of the entities you're probably referring to locally. We've informed them of the opportunity coming down the pike. But again, because we've, we're trying to dial in on this particular design, if you can point to someone in the community that did that design, that has the insight, understanding, and knowledge of executing that design relative to the operations and programming, then you'd be appropriate. But the odds, I mean, it was built in Lexington, Kentucky by this group. It's, you know, I get, I get what you're saying, counsel, about competitive bid, and I'm all for that. And we would have gone down that path with, you know, the uniqueness of this particular request, I think, does warrant the path that we've gone down. We are looking, and of course, when it is done, you know, we're hoping that the bidders are local. We want to keep it all local, financing it, hopefully be local, you know, anything we could do to support our local economy. I'm all for it. But at the same time, I'm standing in the, I'm trying to protect the taxpayers in this equation, too, to make sure that A, we're not spending money we don't need to, B, that when we do come forth and ask council to support a much larger ask, regardless of the method, how we secure that, that it is in the direction that I think is most appropriate for, for the county to be able to have a successful project. Because we don't get to, this one, we don't get to miss on. We have to do this, we get one shot, and we get to do it right. It'll be another hundred and twenty years before we probably do another one.
Here's my last concern, and it's, I've heard this already, and I think this has to be addressed, because what this has done now, okay, since this has been brought forward, as people questioning and saying things like, "Well, you're going to build it on Gracemont, you're going to build it." There's a lot of speculation and supposition going on right now. We don't have, we don't have an answer for that, just as Peg said, there's no site situation. But people are already there. They're already asking questions in the community. They want to know, "Oh, you're going to build a new jail, where?" Okay? So, they're already a cart before the horse. They're already trying to put some kind of building with wire on it.
With that, and that conversation unfortunately is going to evolve. It started last September, I believe, when you asked the Director Keen to come and present on, you know, the state of the, state of the jail. We are looking at multiple sites. We've, we've looked at upwards of a dozen sites around the county, and we continue to look at them, and we'll begin to dial that in, you know, at the, at an appropriate time. But we, we don't have the green light to move forward anywhere at this point on, on site. There are a number of requirements just in selecting a site that are mandated by the state and so on and so forth, so we can't just go out in the middle of nowhere. We need infrastructure, water, sewer, utilities, gas, those types of things have to be accessible to it. And unfortunately, with the development, we're very successful in North Hampton County, a lot of development that drives, you know, cost per acre, and the availability of potential sites becomes scarcer and scarcer. So, we'd like to, it's, we locked this up fifteen years ago in anticipation, and we're ready to go, but we're not, we're not there yet. And that's another conversation. And we'll, at the right time, we'll begin to bring all those resources forward as we present a more comprehensive approach to how we'll, how we'll execute this. But each, some of these items are, as I said, once from, once we decide the direction and execute that RFP for an architect and engineering firm, minimally, it's a nine-to-twelve month window before they present a final product back. So, we're already looking at, no, no, earlier than, if we were, if you gave me the okay tonight to go ahead and do it, and we let the RFP, went through the selection process, we wouldn't see anything to at least the twenty of eighteen, the end of twenty eighteen, if not into twenty nineteen, just for the, for the engineering drawings to let for a bid on how to build it. You know, my, my concern in working some of these in parallel is cost and cost of money and, and cost of construction. Interest rates keep going up, cost of money goes up. Construction costs, we've been told things are, you know, you're looking at a four or five percent annual increase in, in materials and labor costs annually if we delay. So, we're looking at a hundred million dollar project, and I wait two more years, and we'll just add another compounded five percent on top of that over two years. So, time, time does somewhat become of the essence, but yet not, not to the point where we're, we're doing things out of sequence or out of order.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I get it, John. But to me, it's an issue of efficiency versus transparency. And I think that transparency would come with letting, making this competitive, even for this master plan, this beginning piece of work, which I do agree that we need. Transparency makes me want to have a, have a bid on this, open it up.
All right. Anything else?
No silos. Actually, we're looking at matching silos, potentially, so.
So, I guess my question, either for you or solicitor, is what's the next step for us? I mean, we've got an opinion on this, what do we?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well?
No, he read the opinion.
Well, I know, he's got an opinion, but what's, what do we?
I'm sorry, but Mr. Lauer also said that the executive solicitor didn't get a chance to see it.
We haven't heard from the executive solicitor. I think, you know, usually our options are, one is to, you know, concur with the opinion that we get from the solicitor. The other is to file a lawsuit. And I, I just don't like it when two branches of government are in litigation. I don't think there's any productivity when that happens. So, that, those really are the options, but I would wait to hear from Mr. Durkin until we make any further decision.
Okay. Is there anything further this evening? Okay, with that, thank you very much. I guess school's out. We have no students this evening, so.
School's there.
Motion to adjourn moved by Mr. Bennell, seconded by Mr. Werner. Thank you, have a nice evening.